Well, first I want to thank the Tea Party for giving me the opportunity to meet with you tonight. And I also want to thank all of you for the support that you've given me as Commissioner. For those of you who don't know me, I am Ann Obrak, the Wayne County Commissioner for the past 11 years. I have a bachelor's degree in education from Aston University and I taught at school a few years prior to my husband and I starting our own business. And I'm going to ask my husband to wave a hand back there. This is my husband of 40 years. We celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary this past July. And we started a farm, I'm going to say by hook or crook. We rented some ground, we rented some equipment, and we started a farm. We have grown that business over that time period, so now we milk 280 horse steeds and farm 1,200 acres. So the experience that we went through starting, growing, and operating a successful business are some of the very same skill sets that are needed to be a county commissioner. I know how hard it is to make a dollar. And I want to make sure that your hard-earned dollars are spent wisely. One of the main jobs of Commissioner is to budget for the County General Fund. Now, this is a fund that funds different elected officials such as the Sheriff, the Prosecutor, that funds the Public Defender, that funds the court systems, the Muni Court, the Common Police Court, the Auditor, the Treasurer, the Recorder, and Administrative Services in the county. At the Board of Commissioners, and for those of you who don't realize, we have a board of three Commissioners. It takes teamwork. No Commissioner by themselves, whatever they say or do doesn't mean anything. You have to operate as a board and in the majority of the board. We pass a full appropriation budget of about $103 million. That contains about 118 separate financial funds. But the General Fund is the one that most people think about when they think about the budget and what we actually control day in and day out. So in my talk, I didn't know we'd have PowerPoint, so I gave you each this handout here if you'd like to look at that. And I would like to tell you a little bit about what we've been through as county commissioners over time. Now, if you take a look first, we'll start with the green line. Green means money. That's our revenue, okay? And if you look back in 2007 on your chart, you can see that we had about $24.4 million in revenue. And then you can start to follow that green line in 2008. You can see how it dropped. If you look at the red line, that's our spending. In 2007... All right. Does that help?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. In 2007, if you take a look at that, it's the way it should be. You have more revenue than you have expenses. And in 2008, you can see how things started to drop. It caught us by surprise. There were changes at the local, at the state level about the money coming back to the counties. So in 2009, when we made our budget, if you look at the red line, we took it down below where we thought our revenue was going to be. But as you can see, 2009 was a year uncomparable to all. And the revenues fell even farther than we anticipated at the time. So we had to make adjustments. We had to live within the means that we have. The same way my husband and I live within the means that we have in our business and the same way that you live within the means you have as a family. By 2010, you can see that we righted the ship. We were just right at that point. And we had lowered our expenses and we had more revenue than we had expenditures. In 2011, things went up a little bit. 2012, there were some more cuts to local government fund, but we were still okay. By 2013, you can see that our revenue did rise. What this shows is the Commissioners, the full Board of Commissioners, managing through a crisis. And my farm, I can't say, "Okay, I want more for my milk because now everything else has changed." I get the price that we get for our milk. As Commissioners, this board believes that we need to live within the money you've given us. And just because we have a crisis doesn't mean that we have to raise more taxes. What it means is we need to manage through the crisis. And I believe that this Board of Commissioners, my other two Commissioners, Jim Carmichael and Scott Wiggum, have worked together with a team, with the other elected officials to do just that. It wouldn't have happened without teamwork and ability to work together. As you look at our revenue in the green line in 2013, what that is, is we had an increase in sales tax. Things started to pick up. And right now, sales tax is about 43% of our General Fund. Prior to that, our reliance on sales tax wasn't quite as great because we got more funds back from the state. You can also see that our expenditures went up. At this point, we gave modest 2% raises to our non-union folks who have had none over four years. And also, our healthcare costs have risen because of some things that have happened at the federal level. And so if you look at those, we are still way below where we were in 2007 spending. So I am pleased to tell you that our local government and our Board of County Commissioners have worked financially to be responsible, and we are operating below 2007 levels. I don't think you can think of many other local, state, or obviously not federal, but governments that are operating in that manner. So my question, I think the question that you all need to ask is, how did we do that? Well, we created a lean government model. And we've done some things that provide annual savings. One of the first things we did is we changed our property and liability insurance. That doesn't seem like much to people. But we went self-insured with a group of like political subdivisions. We saved $133,000 a year because of that change. We got a new phone system. Again, that doesn't sound like much. But we paid for it in two years, and now we're reaping $70,000 savings every year because of that phone system. The Commissioners moved, I call it the basement, the guys call it the lower level. We used to be up here. The offices were built for the Commissioners up here. But we had downsized. We had an office that wasn't being used because environmental services was out of sewer plants. The dog warden we had contracted out with Humane Society. So we moved to the lower level. We moved OSU Extension up here. And we are saving $43,000 a year because we were able to combine offices. Planning is in with us. We went downsized one. And we were able to rent out the rest of the space to child support. So we're gathering another $20,000 a year. We did energy savings. And all of our buildings, we changed the ballast, like Job and Family Services and Danover. And at that point, we're saving $36,000 a year. A big one came when we did self-insurance for workers' comp. We're saving $243,000 a year because we are self-funded for workers' comp at this point. Of course, I think you all know that we are in the people business. It is not a business where we make widgets. We serve the people. We have been trying to provide the best service possible, but we have been doing it with fewer staff. In 2007, our General Fund salaries totaled $11.4 million. In 2013, at the end, they totaled $9.6 million. That's an overall salary reduction of $1.8 million, a 16% decrease. This Board of Commissioners and our elected officials that we have now have been extremely responsible with your money because I know it means money in your pocket that you can spend elsewhere and go out and spend in the community. One other thing I want to tell you that we've done is that we have reduced our debt. At the same time that we have had all this reduction in income, in 2005, we had a debt of $7.8 million. That was for the municipal court that's behind the Justice Center. And it was also about $700,000 on the Job and Family building. At this point, we're down to $4.3 million in debt. And I want you to know that we believe in paying it forward. Most of you have heard we're doing a courthouse project. The courthouse project is the icon in the county. We have backed $3.5 million for that project. We have, and I can tell you, I have climbed the stairs to that bell tower, I don't know how many times, trying to get grants for this. I climb up to the top, I show all those people who might have money, and they're not buying it. We never did get a grant. So as a Board of Commissioners, we decided it's got to be done. And I can talk about that later if you want, why it has to be done. But we need to do that, and we need to plan for it. We plan for our budget thoughtfully, reasonably, and taking care where we have made changes and cuts. We have tried to be innovative. Anyway, we have $3.5 million back for the project so that after we do the project, your children won't still be paying for it in years to come. As I told him, I could talk forever, and he's going to have to cut me off. He's flashing me the one-minute sign. But as Commissioner, if you reelect me to the position, I promise that I will work hard for you in a way that is fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. We will continue to look for different ways of doing business. It's the mindset of doing it like we always did that some governments get into, and they can't seem to move forward. And so if you vote for me on May 6th, I promise to continue the work to be fiscally conservative with your tax dollars. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I too would like to thank the Tea Party for hosting this event tonight and for everybody that took their time to come out tonight to see us. I'm going to take just an extra minute to tell you about myself because I don't have the luxury of being in the public service for the last 11 years for you to get to know me. So I'll just tell you a little bit about my bio. My name is Chad Curtis, and I'm running to be your next Wayne County Commissioner. I was born in 1974 at Worcester Hospital right here in Wayne County. And I was raised on a 25-acre farm just outside of Worcester in Blanchleville. I attended Shreve Elementary, and I graduated from both Triway High School as well as the Wayne County Schools Career Center with a technical degree in Meat Cutting and Bakery Science. My intention was to go to Jeromeville and work for a couple fingers. I was recruited from that program, however. At 17 years old, I started at the Jam Smucker Company as a technician. I was promoted to a supervisor in the Quality Control Department there. I spent nine years in Quality Control. Then I became a purchaser. I bought frozen fruit from the West Coast as well as fresh apples for our apple butter seasons. I then was promoted to plant what was called Inventory Control. I did plant accounting and ran a $100 million budget at the Jam Smucker Company. I was there for 19 years. I was part of the family. It was truly a family company. When things started to change and Smuckers got bigger, they took on more and more. We went from a $35 million a year company to an $8 billion company. I quickly found myself, even though Smuckers had paid for me to go to Akron University and get my two-year degree, that I had people underneath me that had engineering degrees with masters. So I was told to go back to school, which I did. Went to Malone University, got my bachelor's, but quickly found that the growing company didn't have a place for me. So with the assistance of Smuckers, they helped me move on. I spent two years in a weld factory at GLG in Orville, which I loved my crew. I had 155 people that answered to me. I loved going to work every day, but I found that being in a weld shop wasn't a delight for me or my family. And so I left there, and I'm now a manager at CBS in Orville. So if you'd like to come over and visit my store, feel free. I married my beautiful wife Jen in 2004. She's an RN at a local doctor's office here one day a week. She's a dedicated mother to our seven-four-year-old, seven days a week. And she also manages the books for Sayers IGA in Smithville, which we own together. My work life started early. My dad was a bit of a workaholic, and he ingrained that into us. I learned to work hard on our family farm. And at age 12, I began working full-time at Fred Ladrick's Farm, which was adjacent to ours. We milked 40 head of cows, and I enjoyed doing fieldwork. I would go out in the summer and ride the tractor for 12 to 14 hours getting my farm tan. Later, I worked as a landscaper for Ann Freeman, who had a little airport outside of Wayne County. It would take me seven hours, three times a week, to mow that. And then, as I said, I started my career with the Jam Smucker Company, where I spent the next 19 years of my life. The work side of me was never enough. While I was at Smuckers, I also worked in McDonald's in Orville, Ponderosa in Worcester, Donato's Pizza in Worcester, Movies 10 in Worcester. Then I met my wife, and she said, "Knock it off." So I now have one job. I did manage to get my substitute teaching license during that time period. And since 1995, I have had a BOAG, an academic substitute teaching license, and I teach at the Wayne County Schools Career Center on a substitute basis. I opened a small business in 1999 in downtown Worcester. You ran down Bell Avenue, you'd run right into Dino's. If you turned slightly right, you'd run into Worcester Pets. I built that from the ground up, and after five years, it was sold to a friend of mine who moved it to the north end of Worcester. I've always been interested in public service. I achieved the honor of Eagle Scout when I was 16 years old in Troop 74 in Jefferson, Ohio. My service project was to restore two pioneer cemeteries. I restored the Pioneer Cemetery in Blanchleville as well as the Pioneer Cemetery in Jefferson, Ohio. All of that was voluntary. I put in over 1,000 hours in that project, got all the materials donated. I joined the Wayne County Sheriff's Office as a volunteer reserve deputy in 1994. I spent four years working in the Wayne County Jail, patrolling with some of the fine deputies of Wayne County. I was dedicated to the department. One of our big projects was the Wayne County Fair, and I received several commendations from Sheriff Alexander. My wife Jen and I decided to adopt in 2007, so we enlisted with the Wayne County Children's Services. We very quickly got our son Noah. We fostered him for two and a half years and were successfully able to adopt him. During that time, we had some wonderful children in our home who we miss, and we would trade that experience for the world. Currently, we're on our fourth year volunteers at Grace Further Church up on the north end. My wife and I, every Sunday, hold a newborn entrance on Sundays in between our classes. And I'm the class treasurer for our class there. So that's a brief synopsis of me. None of that qualifies me to be the Wayne County Commissioner. What qualifies me to serve you is I understand people and I care about them. I worked very hard during my life. I lived in downtown Worcester. One of my houses that I lived in for the first, when I moved out in 19, was on Goldman Street. And then I moved down to Liberty Street, just a few blocks down from the depot. I learned what it was like to struggle. I developed many wonderful friendships down there in the process. And it made me just an ordinary guy. And I've decided that if I'm elected to this office, I will never be a career politician. I will be here to serve you. But more importantly, I'll be here to serve everyone. Whether, you know, no matter what walk of life you come from, I am here to serve you. I'll never have a special interest. I'll never have a favorite constituency. And I'll never try to push a deal through for a friend or a rich donor. It's not going to happen. In fact, I'm going to tell you right now, if a rich donor comes to me when I'm elected, I'm going to tell them, "I don't want your money." The people of Wayne County elected me. I don't want your money. I will serve everyone in Wayne County equally, and I will remember the weakest among us in every decision I make. What brought me to this race was exactly what my opponent talked about, the cuts. The county cut agency budgets 13% across the board in 2008 and 10% across the board in 2009. I would have not raised taxes either, okay? I'm a fiscal conservative. But when I look at my budget of my house, I don't say, "Okay, hon, we're going to cut across the board 13%. So cut the groceries 13%." That's not how you budget. You go by line by line, and you figure out what you can cut and what you shouldn't cut. Let me share a few cuts that were discussed. There were across-the-board cuts that hurt the Sheriff's Office. Nobody missed the articles for several years in the paper with the public discourse that went back and forth between the Sheriff's Office. At one point, we had one patrolman, according to the newspaper, on third shift in Wayne County. Wayne County is a county that would have taken 45 minutes if that deputy was intrigued to answer a call. The Health Department was cut by 4.2 employees. They still are operating at that level. They are up 20% in public nuisance complaints today, yet they have two less investigators to go out and check those things. I don't know if you remember Ashley and Brianna Welty, Jacob and Aaron Saul, Lily and Conway, it's a two-year-old, Kearney Pitman. They all suffered for kidney failure when they got bad food at a Chinese restaurant here in town. I wouldn't have cut that budget. I wouldn't cut it to the point where those agencies have to work at those levels. I would have looked to see what else we could have cut. At the same time, money was also taken away from Children's Services. Children's Services has their own levy. They go to the voters and they say, "You know, we have this levy to do our budget." In 2008, the Commissioners went to them and said, "You owe $51,000 in rent for your building because we pulled all our other offices out of there." That year, Randy Moos, because of the increase in children that had been pulled into Children's Services, was planning on hiring another caseworker. He had budgeted $41,000 for that. We were fostering at that time. That person was not able to be hired. Instead, they just spread all the kids thinner throughout the rest of the caseworkers. And those budgets haven't come back. In 2010, I believe, 2009 and 2010, again, Children's Services was asked to pay for Maximus payments in 2009, 2010, and juvenile court costs in excess of $300,000. And they paid those fees two years until finally Melody Snur, who was the chairman at that time, she said, "This is the most controversial, toughest decision the board has ever made. Had it been a three-to-three vote, I would have voted against it. I don't feel comfortable siphoning off money that voters have entrusted to us." She said, calling the Maximus payments, "They're not tangible." I think the question is, what services county government obligated to provide to her agency? That question's never been answered. They asked, "What are these tangible payments going toward?" When they didn't pay them in 2011, the newspaper specifically cites Ann Obrak raised the question again about who would pay the indirect costs. Randy Moos said, "There's been a lot of discussion about it, and his understanding was the agency agreed to pay indirect costs for two years, even though those are not required by law. Unless there is some clear statutory authority to charge back indirect costs to our agency or some type of change that permits a levy-back agency be charged for space, we said his understanding is the board will not pay the indirect costs." When it's time to work on the budget back in October and November, he said he asked the Commissioners what the indirect costs were, and no one ever got back to him. So are there things that need to be cut in order to live within a budget? Absolutely. But you don't go after the weakest of our county. You don't go after Children's Services for money that's supposed to be dedicated to our children. How many people that voted for that levy know that that money was siphoned off to the General Fund? You don't go after the Health Department. When I set my four-year-old down at a dinner table, I assume that that meal that's prepared for me is going to be done under the best guidelines. And I think they're working hard. The Health Department is working hard. But you know what? I've spoken to some of the agents in the field. They're struggling. They're overworked. You don't do across-the-board cuts. You do what's smart. You don't put one deputy on third shift. Yes, the Sheriff's Department is going along well now. The new Sheriff, Hutchinson, seems to have things under control. But what about when he doesn't? What about when the next child has kidney failure? According to the state, when I was looking into what the Commissioner does, the Commissioners are personally liable for the decisions they make. But so is the county. So if the Commissioners make the wrong decision, you know, I'm not going to stand here and say that I will make the wrong decision as your Commissioner. But I will stand up and I will own it. And that's one of the things that I want to stand before you and say, if you elect me on May 6th, the number-one thing that I will do is I will be accountable to you, the taxpayers. When I make a mistake, I will stand up here and I will say, "I made a mistake." There's other projects out there. We talked about the municipal court, about paying down that debt. I personally wouldn't have built that glass monument. It's pretty, but it really has a purpose. The function's inside. It could have been done much cheaper. And I'll stand up here as your Commissioner, and if someone says, "Hey, why did you spend so much on that?", I'll answer to you. If someone says, "Hey, why did you vote for the roundabout if you really didn't feel it was a good idea?", I'll answer and say, "Yeah, I wouldn't have voted for it if I didn't think it was a good idea." That's what I'm going to promise you on May 6th, is that I will be transparent and honest with you. And if you call me out on something or if I make a mistake, I will be accountable for that decision that I made. Because according to the state, I will be personally liable, as well as you, the taxpayers of Wayne County, for my decisions. So I thank you, and I hope that you get out and vote on May 6th.
Brian?
Yes. You talked a lot about things that you wouldn't cut. Can you be specific about which departments you would cut and give a specific amount, how much you feel those departments should be cutting more?
Okay. That's a very good question. There are agencies, the Commissioners themselves call essential and non-essential agencies. In fact, the county shut down January 10th because it was cold outside, okay? But I don't know if you were out there that day. There were people working for the county still in the road. The County Sheriff's Department didn't shut down, okay? You came to this building, it was closed. But if you went out to the Sheriff's Department, they were there. You went to the Street Department that was putting down Saul, they were there. There's essential departments. The Children's Service didn't shut down. They still were answering calls. I don't know the budget line by line to tell you, "Okay, these are the dollars I would have cut." But I can tell you one thing better. I don't know that we would have had to cut anything. As Ann mentioned, they found $5 to $6 million to renovate the inside of the courthouse during that same time period. They found $5 to $6 million to do the outside of the courthouse now. So, you know, to say that we would have had to make those cuts and how deep they would have been, I certainly wouldn't want to go out on a limb and say, you know, what departments I would or wouldn't have cut and how much. But we sold over $3 million worth of land, and that money was dedicated to the courthouse. Well, it doesn't have, you know, when you're doing a family budget, you don't say, "Okay, we've got $15,000 set aside for our debt, but we're not going to eat for the month of September." It doesn't work that way. And it shouldn't work that way in county government either.
Well, first, my opponent has some information wrong. We did not spend $5 million on the courthouse during the time that we had the budget crisis of 2009. On the interior, the courthouse was worked on in the late '90s, '96, '07, '08, '09, prior to my becoming a Commissioner. At that time, the Commissioners of the Board did HVAC, electrical wiring, data wiring. They did the inside of the courthouse as far as the judge's courtrooms and all of that. There was no money spent on the courthouse during the time when I call our fiscal crisis, which was '08, '09, '10, '11. What we did do, and we have been looking for, is money for the outside of the courthouse. The courthouse is 136 years old, and the outside stone is spalding. If you look at the courthouse from a distance, it looks great. If you get up close, you can see what I'm talking about. We've got some water issues coming in. Those have to be addressed. We've got some roof issues also. This is something that, once it's done and that stone is repaired, it's going to be good for another 75 years. This is what we're planning for. This is what we thoughtfully put aside money for. We sold some ground that the county owned in order to put that $3.5 million in an asset that is the county Commissioner's responsibility. The ground at one time, we thought might have a use for it because we thought the Ohio Bio Research Park might go out there. It did not. It is better off in the hands of private people who can make money off that ground, and the county doesn't need to be owning the ground. We need to be taking care of what we're responsible for, which is the courthouse. So there was no money spent during the crisis for the courthouse. That was early '90s. And what we've done now is we've put that money for the ground into a capital fund to be spent for the courthouse, which repairs need to be made. Let's see, what else did he ask about? At this point, I've got several things I could say.
That's...
First, let me, sorry, I don't remember the county. But when you talked about, I have a very smart question right here. You talked about kind of at some point reducing payroll costs by 60%. Is that kind of what I understood? How did you do that? Did you say that people didn't get raises? Did they get pay cuts? Or did you cut...
It was up to each elected official.
Ann, repeat the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You couldn't hear it back here.
I apologize. Her question had to do with the salary decreases that we had over time. All of the elected officials worked together because they knew what we were facing. And there was not cuts across the board of 13%. That was the goal, but that wasn't how it was done in the end. Our total cuts were about 9.1. But they were not equally dispersed across the board.
You said 16%.
That was a 16% reduction in salaries. When I said the 9%, that was the entire budget reduction, not just salaries.
I'm talking about 16%.
The salary line items, they were done by attrition. There were some layoffs. It was up to the elected officials to see what they needed to do to write their budget. The Commissioners didn't say, "You need to lay off people. You need..." They are each their own entity to run their office the way they see fit. County government is a linear type of government. We're in charge of the budget, but we're not over the sheriff. We're not over the auditor. We're not over the treasurer. The budget is set, and then they work within their office to perform the duties prescribed by Highway Code in the way they see fit. And so that salary reduction, a lot of them were attrition. We had retirements. They were not replaced. There were no... There were no, there were people that went on four-day work week in some offices. Those were the choices of the elected officials at the time, but not the commissioners. The commissioners set the budget. When we look in totality of the amount of salary savings, it ended up to be that much. People are doing more, and in Wayne County, under the general fund, you will find people doing a lot more. I don't like it when somebody says, "Well, I was a government worker," and there they are sitting around doing, you know, not doing that much. That's not true in Wayne County. More people took on more tasks as people left, and we did not replace them. And there were some layoffs, yes.
Again, the county commissioners do not have control over what the sheriff does, but they do hold the purse strings. It's like saying that the Senate doesn't have control over, over, you know, the nation. Well, okay, well, the House of Representatives holds the purse strings for what the Senate does. The county commissioners hold the purse strings for the sheriff. If they cut his budget, and his staff is his number-one budget online item, then that's what he's going to have to cut. The Health Department did it. And the data that I shared with you wasn't data I came up with out of thin air. The data I shared with you can all be found in the daily record over the last 11 years. So if you go to Google search and you look up the daily record and you look for just keywords, Anne Obrak, Scott Wiggum, Jim Carmichael, you'll find these articles. There was an, you know, there was a big to-do about the roundabout last week. Well, they voted for it, and then the farmers got upset, and then they had another article in the paper and said, "Well, we're not controlling the roundabout." Okay, they're not controlling Children's Services, but when you take $51,000 from them when it's not budgeted, and they have budgeted for a new caseworker, you have controlled what the Children's Services can and can't do. So yes, they don't control those, those offices, but when you slice their budget, you are controlling what they do, especially when it's outside the scope of what they've already
Jared, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I would like to clarify something. I'm Sharon Underwood, Wayne County Auditor, and I would just like to address your statement about the Health Department. The county commissioners do not control the budget of the Wayne County Health Department. That is controlled by the Wayne County Budget Commission, and the Health Department is funded from, their general fund is funded from subdivisions. So the townships, the villages, the cities all pay a contribution, and then the rest of their funds comes from grant money. So that is one thing I would like to, I would like to state that that is a non-general fund, and they have their own board that actually controls their budget. So that's just for clarification.
The Health Department technically is a political subdivision, the same as a village, and the county commissioners do have nothing to do with their funding whatsoever. We do not pass their bills. They're not on their meeting. Their source of income is the inside village on property tax, like Jared was talking about. They have had reductions, but that's probably because personal property tax is not being collected at the state. It has absolutely nothing to do with the commissioners.
More questions? Paul?
This is for Chad. I'm curious, when the income, the revenues dipped so dramatically as Anne, Jared showed us, and at that time, the unions that came for a raise, what, how would you have handled that situation?
The question was, when the revenues dropped and then the union came for a raise, she's speaking about the Sheriff's Department, what would I have done about that? Sheriff Mauer, at that time, if you remember, he was very upfront and open about the fact that he had no control over whether he could give those deputies a raise or not. The union had voted for the raise, and there was just a question of how the money was going to come about to pay the raise. So the raise was already done. It wasn't, if I was sitting on the county and commissioner's board at that time, there's nothing that I could have said, "Yes or no, they get a raise." The raise was already a matter of fact, according to all the articles that I read. The question was, the amount of money that he was asking for, and then the amount of money that he was, that he was given. If you remember, at the same time, the pay-to-stay was shut down. The pay-to-stay had an annual budget, I believe it was around $675,000 a year. That was shut down as well. And, you know, like I said, there's repercussions to the decisions we make. Was the pay-to-stay a good thing? I don't know. It housed a lot of, of nonviolent criminals that are now being, letting, you know, they give, I don't even know what they call it anymore, but if you sell drugs in Wayne County, there's a good chance you're not going to jail. There's no space in the jail. They give them, I can't even remember the term, but, you know, the pay-to-stay used to house those people, and they would help them try to find work while they were there. But that was another thing that was cut during that same time period.
The pay-to-stay was started in, I was thinking about 2002, it was before I became a commissioner, was started. At that time, there were 500 people sitting waiting for jail sentencing. The jail was overcrowded. And so the pay-to-stay was a cheaper way to house the prisoners, prisoners at the time, because if you didn't get them to serve their jail time, then they would have been released. Over time, that population diminished. We no longer had people waiting to serve their jail term. The idea that it was a pay-to-stay was a total misnomer, especially by the time the financial crisis hit, because they weren't paying, they didn't have jobs, and it was a $400,000 general fund budget at that time. Without the need to house prisoners, because we didn't have a backlog at the time, judges were doing other things. They were doing house arrests and some other things of that nature. We didn't have the backlog. It was costing us $400,000 that we didn't need to spend. That was one place where the sheriff cut his budget. I want to also speak about the union negotiations too, because that was-
Was that not the answer?
Oh, okay.
It was part of the answer.
It was part of the answer, so, okay.
Part of the question.
All right. The deputies had union negotiations, and in 2009, we could not come to a contract agreement. So deputies are a non-strike unit. And so first, we went to something called fact-finding, and that's where our people come in and look at the situation, and then if we don't agree with the fact-finder, that person, then we went to final and binding arbitration, which means whatever it is they say, you have to pay. Well, in the final and binding arbitration report, they came out that Wayne County commissioners, you have not raised taxes, and Wayne County commissioners, you have not borrowed in order to have, on your regular operating expenses. Therefore, you can pay the raises that the union was asking for at this time, and they, I think they, I can't even remember if they sent them a 3% or 4%. I don't remember at this point. It's been a while. So that came back. As a Board of Commissioners, we were appalled by the idea that we would pay ongoing costs by borrowing. You borrow only for a capital expense. You borrow only when it's necessary, and that, so, or that we didn't raise taxes in order to pay these ongoing costs. If you remember, we were trying to manage through the crisis. We took that to the Common Plea, the Common Plea Court upheld the final and binding arbitration. We took it to the Appeals Court. The Appeals Court looked at the process and said there were problems, and sent it back to the Common Plea Court. At that time, this all took time. You don't go through the court system very fast. So over three years had passed. So we hadn't given the raises, and we hadn't come to a conclusion. So it was time for another union negotiation. So at that time, we negotiated, and we came out with, the three years that we were, had first talked about, came out as zero, zero, zero. So our deputies took three zeros. Our other non-union folks have taken zeros also. So then in the next, then we settled with a 1, 2, and 3, and so for the six years, the deputies had 0, 0, 0, 1, 2, and 3, and 2014 is the year of 3. And so that's how we went through the union negotiation. It was tough, because I don't believe people realized how fast our revenue was diminishing. You could tell people, but I just don't think they realized it. We have an excellent working relationship with the sheriff. We are working together on many projects at this point.
Thank you. Other questions?
Could each of you briefly, and just in general, tell us your view on the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium, NIOSC?
Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium.
Well, I, I do not agree with what they are trying to do. They have named Wayne County as part of it. This Board of Commissioners has not been part of it. Their idea is to, part of it was to share revenue across. New businesses came in, there were some other things in there, and we have not participated nor been part of it at this time.
I'll be perfectly honest and transparent, and I don't know enough about it to speak on that issue. And that's okay, you know? I, I was actually watching the debates from 2002, when Anne was a candidate for the first time, and one of the things that she said was, "I don't really know everything a commissioner does, and I'm not going to sit here and profess to know everything a commissioner does at this point, but I'll learn." The other thing is, you know, Anne said 13 times in the one debate I watched, her vision for Wayne County. Well, I have a vision for Wayne County too, and I grew up in this county. I want this county to be the best. And unfortunately, we're, we're slipping from what I remember as a child. I mean, our homeless population has grown immensely. You know, we're, we're just not where we should be, and I appreciate the, the projects that our people are doing that are trying to make it better, and I want to work with them. I just throw out the Counseling Center, who's building a aging apartment complex for children that are in foster care. When they turn 18, they have nowhere to go. They're going to house them. I want to work with those people. I want to work with people to stop human suffering, that, that help the weakest among us, and that's, that's, that's how I would answer your question. I'll do the best for every, every citizen of Wayne County, whatever that decision is at that time.
Thank you.
This is more of a statement and a question. If you're going to represent us, then you better find out what agenda 20 women's all about. If you're pleading ignorance, then you need to be fired. It's that important, because it comes out of the United Nations. It's about taking the flowers that have been on our families for years. That's only one thing that's up there. That's why they're declaring all the land-
Would you share with us?
Huh?
Would you share with us something about it?
I just-
Let's, let's not.
Yeah, I have a hundred.
Let's, let's leave the questions specific to the candidates.
Absolutely.
Is there another question? We're running close on time with the Q and A.
I just was wondering, you mentioned you would help the homeless, or that, what's your idea about doing that?
One of the things that is really striking to me, I, as you know, I live downtown Worcester, and I knew the three homeless people that were in downtown Worcester when I lived down there. One of them was named Mary, and she would walk up and down Liberty Street and scream on a daily basis, and I became friends with her. She'd come in our pet store. She was a great lady, but she suffered from mental illness. She was out on the street because we closed down the Apple Creek Developmental Center. A lot of the people that are on the street don't want to be homeless. If you go down to Tent City, and I don't care what people say about Tent City, there's not maybe more than two, three people there that want to be homeless down there. There are a couple, and they have their agendas. But the other 154 that were piled into the Salvation Army when it hit 14 below zero, the other 154 that were there don't want to be there. We have programs in this county that are designed to help these people. Some of them will accept it, some of them won't. But the ones will accept it, there needs to be money there for them. I have friends that are leaving this county because we don't have enough money in our, our agencies in this county, so they're going to Mansfield, because Mansfield has the money.
So what agencies would you need to-
The Counseling Center is one of them. Steps is another one that helps them. Metropolitan Housing is another one that helps them.
And what is the county or the commissioner's budget for those men?
Again, I, I tell you, I don't have access to that because I'm not a commissioner. When I'm commissioner, I'm going to look and see what I can do, and I'm going to work with the other commissioners and see what we can do to help our homeless population, to help our mentally ill, to help the children that are involved. It's not just mentally ill adults. The mentally ill adults are living in a car with three kids.
I'm wondering, I mean, I've never looked at the county budget, but isn't that available? Isn't that public?
If you go to those agencies, ask them how much money's available. It's limited. It's, it's a limited budget that they have, but it's not, it's different across every county, and like I said, I worked in, in some account, or I worked in Mansfield for the last six months, the CVS over there, and I got to know them, and I got to talk into some of their people, their public officials, and they have money. So people are going over there. I don't know the dynamics of that. I plan to learn a lot more. I plan to educate myself, but there's a population in our county that's not being represented currently, and whether it's the commissioner's job, if it's my job outside of here, that's what I'll do. I, I'll tell you right now, you can announce this in the paper, my first year, because of the cuts that the, the budget, necessary cuts that were across the county, I'm going to cut my pay the first year as commissioner, and I'm going to donate that, and if anyone wants public record of that, I'll have it available, but I'm going to donate the same amount that every agency in Wayne County's been cut to the agencies of Wayne County, back to them. I don't think that $65,000 plus a year is necessary for me to, to represent the people of Wayne County as commissioner.
The county budget is available for anybody. It is a public document. Anyone can go and get that at any time. They can ask in the office. Jared has a CAFR that you can get. So if you want to see the county budget, it's totally a public document. I have to comment, I work with Family and Children First Council as a, the High Revised Code has a Family and Children First Council. We all work together as far as agencies, and the commissioners have a seat on that. I have been on that council. I've been president of that council, and I've worked with families and children. We also have a very robust Department of Job and Family Services that serves those folks and works together with the nonprofit system we have. Our nonprofit system happens to work very well because they actually check to see if people are getting services from one folks. They can't go from the Orville Salvation Army over to the Wayne, Worcester Salvation Army, over to people to people. They check. So we have a very robust net, safety net for folks. What I'm concerned about too is economic development. These folks need jobs. I do agree with my opponent that we do have mental health issues, and our Mental Health and Recovery Boards have been cut, and that is a problem. We even see the mental health issues in the, in the court system, or in the, in the jail system, and, and that's, that is something that we all need to work on. But as commissioner, I've been very active in supporting Family and Children First Council, advocating with the nonprofits. We do not fund the nonprofits. As a county agency, I cannot give something to the Heart Association because I like it. We, we cannot fund a nonprofit just because we happen to like it. We are creatures of the High Revised Code. Municipality's different. They can create their own laws. We only can do what is said in the High Revised Code. We are an arm of the High Revised Code. So, like I said, we could not divert money to the Ohio, the Health, the Heart Association just because we like them. We can assist them in ways we do through the Family and Children First Council, but we cannot directly fund a nonprofit.
And I understand that, and that's what I said, it's the county agencies that can help those people that I would look into what I could do as a commissioner. Me personally, everyone in this room has their own personal, you know, objective to do with their budget. My wife and I, we, we fund an orphanage through our church. We choose to do that. That's not something I'm saying I would do as commissioner with your money. I would only focus on the agencies that are county agencies that can help those people.
All right, I'm going to close off this part of our meet, the meet the candidates. I thank you both for your attendance and for your comments and for your answers.